Okay, I have, I have nine o'clock. I would like to announce before we call this meeting to order and proceed with our agenda that there is a Board of County Commissioners meeting, a special Board of County Commissioners meeting that is scheduled to take place in this room at ten o'clock. And so if we run over a couple of minutes, I don't think that that's a great big deal, but we do want to be aware that there is a pending meeting following our meeting. And if we can get through our agenda by ten o'clock, that would probably be very appreciated by our county commissioners. That being said, we'll ask that our, that our staff will call the roll.
Chris Steele.
Here.
June Elkins Baker.
Here.
Reverend Ray Douglas.
Here.
Hannah Royce.
Here.
Reverend Derek Scobie.
Here.
Stephen Buck.
Here.
Leslie Nessmith.
Here.
Ryan Haney.
Here.
Erin Engelke.
Here.
All are present.
Fantastic. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Leslie, would you mind to lead us?
United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. I would just note that our meeting is in compliance with the Open Meetings Act and the, the notice for this meeting was properly posted on July the eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. We will move to public comment. I have not received any notice or requests for public comments, so I see none. We'll move on to our agenda item number two, which is discussion and possible action to approve the meeting minutes from our June eighth meeting of the Citizens Advisory Board. I think there is a motion and a second, but I didn't see who did it.
I moved.
And I seconded.
Okay, great. Thank you. We will call the roll.
June Elkins Baker. Reverend Ray Douglas. Hannah Royce.
Yes.
Reverend Derek Scobie.
Aye.
Stephen Buck.
Epsom.
Leslie Nessmith.
Aye.
Ryan Haney.
Yes.
Erin Engelke.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Did, did you, did I vote on that? It's okay. I don't need to.
I do apologize. I skipped you. Chris Steele.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry.
Worries. Agenda item number three, discussion and possible action regarding a report from our jail administrator, Greg Williams. Greg, you recognized?
Thank you and good morning. I really have two reports and I'll just combine those if that's, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Yep. This is our report for June, so I know at this point it's about twelve days behind, but detainee deaths, we had two deaths in June. Christopher Kleimer and also Melvin Lovelace, and both of those are being investigated as suicides. We had a Corey McMichael who went to the hospital in June twenty-seventh. He was found disoriented and confused, took him to the hospital, and then he passed on July the second. And then we've had Shane, what's his last name? Slavens. And he was involved in an altercation at the jail and was taken to the jail. He was discharged from our custody, but he did pass away on July the eleventh. So we have had those deaths. Again, I'll talk to you a little bit about our staffing levels and what we're doing to recruit and maintain staff. And also I'll talk to you about a couple of projects that we have started and kind of where we're at on that status. COVID nineteen, we had four detainees test positive in June. We had thirteen employees test positive in June. At this point, we have three employees that are still out positive and we have no detainees that are currently positive. And again, our, our processes are, have remained the same. And of course, they're in CDC guidelines. We test all the detainees three to five days after their arrival. If they're positive, then we maintain a quarantine on them for ten days. And if they're negative, then we'll go ahead and assign them to appropriate housing. We did reinstate our mask policy for a while when we had thirteen employees that were positive. So we were trying to protect the detainees and each other. So we did go back to a mandate, mask mandate, just to make sure that that was just a temporary kind of a thing that's gone away, but it has. It seemed to spike real quick and then it seemed like it has tapered back off. So we're very encouraged by what has happened and really kind of where we're at with that. An employee update, we had seventeen cadets that graduated the training academy on the fourteenth. We had twelve new cadets that started the academy on the twenty-seventh. As of the writing of this, we had three hundred and nineteen. I think we're up above three twenty right now. I know we've got two more that started Monday and we have half a dozen at least or so that right now have been hired and are ready to start this coming Monday because we start all of our employees on Monday. We start our onboarding processes on Monday and then they're in that orientation, if you will, or some onboarding processes until the academy starts. We have an academy that starts every month. So it's, it's potentially possible for a person to be hired on the first of the month and then go through three months of orientation at the facility before they actually start the training academy. But again, it's just critical these days and with the hiring situation that you get people on and you get them started. And there's always good work. We can start their training and start their orientation on any day. Releasing and booking, we had thirty-nine hundred and forty-one total in June. We had nineteen hundred and eighty released, nineteen sixty-one that were booked in. Our average has been about sixteen thirty-one. A year ago, we were doing it sixteen fifty-nine. So those numbers are very consistent and have, have stayed very consistent this year. And even when compared this year to the last year, it's very, it's very consistent. This is the total for two thousand and twenty-two. We've done forty-five thousand eighty-two so far in two thousand and twenty-two. And again, that's twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight have been released, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-four have been booked in. And again, those aren't necessarily individuals. When you look at that, you kind of have to be careful because that doesn't mean that twenty-two thousand people have come. That's just twenty-two thousand bookings that have happened. So again, that, that's a little bit deceiving, but really this is more of a workload, kind of a statistic, more than it is a person statistic. We went back and we kind of looked at the population of the jail. We went back to two thousand and fifteen and you can see in two thousand and fifteen, now this is the highest average for that particular year. So we went back and we averaged every, the population every month and then we picked the highest of that particular year. So again, this is not like every year in January, every year in February. So this is the highest that it ever got, the average got during that particular year. Is that clear for? Yeah. So in two thousand and fifteen, we were at twenty-nine ninety-five. Two thousand and sixteen, we're at twenty-six. You can see the chart gradually goes down to two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty, we had a little bit of a bump. And again, when you really look, take a deep dive and look at the numbers and what all was going on, it was very hard to release people. The courts were slower than what they typically were. DOC was not taking people like they typically were. So really the processes that get people out of the jail had slowed down slightly during that, that year. So that may be why that number got up, at least that, that particular month was a little bit high. But you can see we've had a gradual trend, trend downward, and we expect that trend to continue this year. Inoperable cells, again, has been a big issue for us. You know, we've, we've restored and renovated probably about four hundred cells since the trust took over in July of two thousand and twenty. An inoperable cell can be a lot of things. It used to be the lights destroyed, it's got a hole in the wall, the toilet fixtures are down, lots of things take that. But if any of the fixtures or any of the appliances or any of the services are non-functional in a particular cell, then we consider it inoperable. We'll close that cell and not utilize it. We do go back occasionally, and you guys have toured the jail, you'll see pods that have been completely shut down. So at some point, when you have a major renovation of a pod, then we'll shut that pod down and start renovating that. I can tell you that when we started, that was probably a six-month process to renovate a pod because they were just so, so much damage. And right now, we're renovating those pods in about two months. So again, I think the damage or the repairs that are necessary have declined since we took over. But again, it's very important to keep those cells occupiable and really where we can put people in there just to separate people and just to keep down the crowdedness. So we're very much in tune to that. Right now, we have no pods that are down. We just renovated two B and it's finished and it's ready to occupy. So we'll probably be doing that this week or early next week. We, you know, site checks are a huge piece of, of security and safety. And, you know, those standards changes, you guys know, some, some folks take continuous observation if they're suicidal or, or on a suicide precaution level one, then it's continual. So we have to dedicate one per, one staff person to watch that one person. And then it goes to fifteen minutes, you know, different, different levels required. And it goes up all the way up to an hour. And a site check is basically a staff person making eye contact with that person to make sure that they're well and that they have no issues and that, and that they're not at any kind of a risk. So site checks are challenging when your staff are short and you've got thirteen stories and four pods on each. I mean, it's a mess to, to manage. But we are working very hard on that. There's some things that we've done as far as documenting, logging those site checks and putting special emphasis on that. And again, I believe that the more attention you give something, the better, the more. So we have given those a lot of attention and we have even heightened that level of attention during the last thirty days. The Health Department report, we have all but finalized our response to that. I can't remember. They came in about sixty days ago. I thought I had that date. I apologize for that. And they, they cited several deficiencies. And, and again, this is the fourth follow-up to this year's inspection. So we have gone through and we, we typically go through each one of those deficiencies and we'll identify a team of people to respond to that or look at that to see what can we do and what can we do to fix it and then what can we do to keep it fixed. And that goes into a, a pretty lengthy report. And that, that report is finalized and we're just doing the final reviews on it. We are upgrading our camera system. Right now, the, the jail has digital cameras and analog cameras. And analog cameras are hard to manage with matrices and with computers and with things that really monitor cameras. Really, a camera system is much more complicated than what people would think because of the recording and because it records motion and it records movements. And, and a lot of those kind of things. And modern cameras, you know, will, will, will do a lot better job than what we have, but you got to go digital. So we're in the process of doing that. It'll be an update of about two hundred and fifty cameras. That'll be replaced. They're three sixty view. You can really get four cameras with one license. So it gets pretty complicated. I'm willing to discuss that with people, but that project has started. Digi Systems is who's putting that in. And they've started the head in and the programming and all the computers setting up the, the matrices on that to parallel what we currently have. And they should start cameras today. Again, we had a person that was COVID symptoms last night, so they called and said, hey, we may not get there today because of this or that. So we're still struggling with that. You know, supply chains and cost and getting people to work. And COVID is still a monster for us to deal with infra companies, as you guys very much know. But that should start this morning if all goes well. Take about sixty days probably to complete that system. So hopefully, maybe sooner than that, but, but they, they've told us maybe sixty days at, at the long end of that project. So we ought to be up and running within sixty days. And that will drastically improve our, our camera system. Completed projects, you know, the, the facility has three gates that control access to the parking lots and to the facility. One is on the backside where the trucks come in, deliveries come in, trash trucks, those kind of things come in. And then two on the employee parking lot, one for an entrance, one for an exit. And those gates, it's my understanding, have not worked in decades. And our parking lot is very unsecured, which facilitates drops and facilitates people come in and vandalizing our vehicles and those kind of things. So really getting those gates operational was important. And we did that when we, when we did the jail control system that many of you have seen. That was part of that system, but it is up and running and, and it has been completed. Ongoing projects, we've talked a little bit about that. We finished the renovation of two B. And again, we have put all new hinges on all the locks and doors in the, I mean, not the locks, but on the doors in the detention center. Two and six still have the old lock style, but the, that they do have new hinges. We've made a very big effort on painting and cleaning and doing some deep cleaning. And again, we've even hired a company to help us sanitize and clean the pods. Those areas are secured areas and really you can't get help to, you know, the detained help to come in and help clean those. So instead of pulling staff off of the duties that they would normally have, we did hire a company to come in and do a deep cleaning. And they are in the process of getting those pods and offices cleaned. We were able to host a regional training event and it was master's level CERT training. And again, we had six agencies from Oklahoma, New Mexico and Texas come and participate. We used one of the pods that was vacant, one of the ones, that was two Baker where we were renovating. So there were no detainees or nobody involved in that. And it was an excellent training site and that training went very well. So again, it's just some more specialized training that we, that we want our staff involved in. And again, there's never such, such a thing as too much training. So any opportunity that we get, especially this national level, experts come in and give us training, we certainly want to take advantage of that.
Hey Greg?
Yes, sir.
Remind me, what does CERT training stand for?
It's our emergency team. It's our, it's our, it's our emergency team. So we have a group of officers that are specialized in, in emergency. So they, they do our emergency kind of, you know, cell entry teams and evacuations. And if we had a group disturbance or those kind of things, those are the individuals that would go in and, and take care of that. Yep. It's security. Oklahoma Detention Center, we recently promoted eleven people. And again, we think that that's a big part of retention is celebrating our promotions and celebrating people as they move up in the agency and make that commitment to stay with us. And those are the eleven people that, that we were able to promote during June. This is our employees of the month. And again, we're very proud of our employees. They, they work very hard and they are very dedicated. And this is Ms. Krebs in Desire. And their employee, we have an employee, an officer of the month and an employee of the month. And that's how we separate that. That concludes my jail report. We had talked about, we talked about going over the focus group reports. And I wanted to give you a little update on that. Am I lost? Thank you, ma'am. And I, I thought I'd, it'd be helpful if I'd just go back and say, you know, groups and experts come into the detention center to look at really what's going on is not new. I could go back at least and I could find ten years of documents at least that talk about that we had hired consultants in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. We had the Vera Report come out in two fifteen. C-Jack was, was formed and have done a lot of studies and reviews in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one. We had NCI, NIC, excuse me, come in and do an audit and do an inspection. We had a private consultant come in at twenty-one. Then we had these focus groups that come into twenty twenty-one. So the idea of experts and citizens and groups of people coming into the detention center and even the criminal justice system as a whole and looking at that, trying to help with recommendations and making some changes is not new. And again, we welcome all of that. And again, you can see since I've been there, I've, I've invited and had three people, three different groups come in and take a look at what we're doing because I am very interested in getting people's perspective. And certainly don't ever believe that what we're doing is the best, absolute best way to always do things because I think things change. And some of the things that haven't worked in the past might work now. Things that have never been tried might work. So I am very open to those suggestions and ideas. The focus group was created in twenty. The trust created this focus group, again, just to, just to come in with some fresh eyes and get a fresh group of people together and come in and look at some things that we wanted to do. That, that focus group had members from the community. They had subject matter experts and they had some of which were, had experience inside of the detention center, were part of that group as well. They came in, they spent, I don't know, almost a year really looking at things. And eventually that subcommittee was broke down into three groups. There was a group that looked at direct supervision, a group that looked at classification, and a group that really looked at the population reduction. So I'll talk a little bit about each one of those. Again, this is a big, this is kind of a high-level overview of these areas. And as you read through, you've got those reports. If not, I can get you another copy of those reports. But if you ask specific questions about specific points of any of these, I encourage you, give me a call, send me a text, send me an email, come by the office and we can sit down and really go through the nuts and bolts of what that's about. Direct supervision. And again, basically, I wanted to give you an idea of what direct supervision is because there's a lot of misunderstandings and it's kind of a broad term. And if you look that up and you do any studies on direct supervision, then you'll get a wide variety of really what that actually means. But in a nutshell, it's putting the staff where the detainees are at, in the most simplest terms. That's what direct supervision is. You don't monitor them from a control room, don't monitor from a camera, you don't monitor them from, through the mail or through paper. You actually get the staff face-to-face with the people that are being detained. And in my mind, that's direct supervision. And that really is the modern corrections. And it's been that way for probably a decade. And people have moved way away from indirect supervision. And what we have at the detention centers is considered pod indirect supervision. And again, that's a design that I hope we don't repeat in the near future. Some of the things that really impact direct supervision, of course, is staffing because if you want to get staff in front of the people that are detained, you have eighteen hundred people. So getting your staffing levels up is very critical. A lot of the report that you have in front of you talks about staffing. There's a lot of suggestions about the numbers of staff. And again, you can go back and like I said, we've been studied a half a dozen times since two thousand and nine. And some of those studies will tell you that we need six hundred people, seven hundred people to work at that jail. And again, I'm a simple-minded person, but the way I see it is that really to do a staffing analysis, and I've been trained in staffing analysis, but you really look at the workload, what you do, how many times you do it, how long it takes to do it, and then you use that formula to figure out how many people do you need to do that? Does that make sense? I mean, it's very simple. Staffing analysis is very simple. So in order to do a staffing analysis, you first have to understand what is it that you're doing? What is it that you want to do? And then you figure out how often do you want to do it? How long does it take to do it each time? And then it gives you the numbers to tell you how many staff you have. And really, I have not wrapped my mind around the jail exactly what we want to do. It seems like it changes. You know, you talk to bondsman, they want us to do some things different. The courts wants you to do things. The attorneys wants you to do things. Public defender's office, the Health Department, NIC. So again, we, we've got to kind of decide what is it that we want to do. But I can tell you from my experience and the analysis that I've done, four hundred people would give us basic operations. If we had four hundred staff, we could do basic operations. Now, that's not extensive mental health. That's not extensive mental health training. That's not extensive substance abuse treatment or extensive substance abuse training. That's not face-to-face visitors with, with the public. I mean, all of those things take more people, right? Because it's more tasks, more often, more time. But just basically operations, getting people healthcare, getting people to court, getting attorneys in front of their clients. Takes about four hundred offs, about my four hundred staff, about two hundred and sixty of those need to be security staff. But again, those numbers can be argued and I can show you how I calculate that. But it, it, it's kind of a science to do that. The report, and I may be way off topic. If I'm talking too much, you just have to tell me to move on. Really, and when you look at the, with what the, the task force looked at, there was a lot of recommendation about number of staff. I really couldn't make, to be honest, I really couldn't make sense on the math because I've never seen the math that they had proposed. And they couldn't explain how you come up with that formula to determine the number of staff that you need. So that was, I didn't find that very helpful. They did recommend an analysis, but again, I think to do a proper analysis, you have to, you have to really kind of finalize and get a focus on what is it that you want to do and what services do you want to provide? And how often do you want to provide them? And I don't think we're quite there yet. The distribution of staff, they made some comments and some recommendation about distribution of staff. And again, in my mind, you know, you, you assign the staff to do the duties. So if you've got, they, they, they proposed that we put equal numbers of staff on all shifts, on all days of the week. Well, when you look at the operation, that doesn't make a lot of sense because courts, Monday through Fridays, when we go to court. And court facilitates a lot of staff time, getting people out, getting them showered, getting them dressed, getting them downstairs, getting them transported to the courthouse, you know, taking them back from the court, getting them back to their right cell, feeding them sack lunches, feeding them meals. So really going to court is a, is a, is an activity that takes a extra staff. So you want extra staff when you're going to court. Weekends, we don't really do visits. We don't really do a lot of attorney-client visits. We don't really do a lot of agency visits. The weekends are slow times and the workload is just slower. You know, we're a service provider. So we look at what services are provided and when are those services most needed? And that's how we do our staffing. But again, I can, I can discuss that with you. And if you've got different opinions about that, then I'm certainly open to those suggestions. But you'll see in that report, there's some suggestion. And that was the line of thought that we had when we went back and looked at those, those recommendations. Duties of staff, and of course, there's some, there's some recommendations about duties of staff that I think were right on target. You know, when we took over, I say when we took over. And when, when I got to work, the security officers were mainly doing all the work. All the security, what you'd call security work or client contact work was almost all detention officers or deputy sheriffs. And we went back and we really have looked at that very hard because they're very hard. Security staff are much harder to find than, let's say clerical staff. And really, the, the jail has administrative staff, clerical staff, security staff. That's it. So when I say clerical, I'm not talking about clerical like what would traditionally be thought of as clerical. We're talking about non-security staff that work in, that work in the center. And we started looking at that and we thought, well, non-security staff, maybe they can look at cameras. Maybe they can hand out keys. Maybe they can take logs. Maybe they can do some classification. Maybe they can do some of those kind of functions. So we have shifted a lot of those functions that were traditionally done by security staff to non-security staff. But they're still very competent. They're still very well-trained. And that has worked very well for us. Again, we're trying to manage the available resources. You know, there's a national labor shortage going on if people haven't noticed. And it's hard to, it's hard to get the kind of quality staff and numbers of staff that we really want. Although Reverend Scobie has helped us with that effort and we appreciate that. But we're still struggling with that. So district, the duties of staff is something that we have rearranged that I can go into attorney bonds. That was all security. Now it's no security and attorney bonds. It's all clerical. And we've received some criticism for that, for that and from that because of the optics that it looks like. But really, I think it's the most efficient way and it's the best utilization of staff. We want our security staff to be more on those pods and on those floors and in, face-to-face with those people that are being detained and providing those services. So we really tried to shift them out of the offices, onto the floors and onto the face-to-face. And again, that's in, straight in line with direct supervision. So those are some of the efforts that we've made. Again, kind of, kind of what's involved with direct supervision, staff are in the pods with the inmate. And again, when you look at training, there was a lot of comments or several comments in the, in the focus groups about training. Some people wanted us to do no online training, do all in-person, all face-to-face, no online. Some people thought we ought to have just peer training where it's just like on-the-job training with, with some other people. There were some comments about eliminating CLEET, which is our law enforcement, that's your police training, and really where the training was at and the locations of the training. So you'll see some comments about all of those key areas. And again, we 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 just look at the numbers and follow best practice. So what we got with other agencies, we looked at national trends and certainly online training is becoming more and more popular. You can get a college degree, you can get a master's degree online. So we're we are not convinced that online training, all online training ought to be excluded because we think that there is a place for some online training. We certainly appreciate the in person, having subject matter experts stand in front of the class and talk specifically and answer questions. So we do not underestimate the value of that interaction and certainly support that. The peers, when you do come to work, you are assigned a person to walk or to shadow. So again, that is very common and best practices would support peer training as well. So we have got a a combination of all three of those and we continue to evaluate really, is this a class that can be taught online or is this a class that really takes a face to face interaction with with the with the participants? So we have certainly taken those suggestions to heart and we have made some adjustments with that. CLEET, we have sent one person to CLEET since we took over in July twenty twenty. We've got two more scheduled to go. And again, we do high security transports, we do security at hospitals. So there is certainly a need for that law enforcement, if you will, kind of activity. So we will continue to support CLEET and send limited numbers of people through CLEET. Again, we certainly recognize that we're a detention center, we are not a police station. We are a detention and those those two fields are closely related, but they are vastly different in mindsets and approaches. And we will continually emphasize that, that we are detention and we have made great strides in that in that regard. You know, when we took over, everyone in the in the jail had basically been operated by the police for the sheriff's office for a hundred and sixty years. And the staff there were very much tuned into the fact that they were law enforcement people. And we have made that, started making that transition from law enforcement to detention. And again, they're they're cousins, but they're not the same thing. And our training is much more geared towards detention, our policies are much more geared towards detention, our approach is much more geared towards detention. I just, I just do will not accept and tolerate the robber, police and robber kind of mentality, cops and robbers, if you will, kind of a mentality and approach. And we are not the cops and they're not the robbers and we don't play that game. And I'm very opposed to that. So again, we will continue to focus probably too much. Classification. Again, when we started this, just to be honest with you, in my mind, and again, I've been involved in classification and validation of classification instruments and conducting classification instruments for a long time. And classification is basically identifying risk and needs is what classification in a nutshell, that's basically what that is. The committee did address some of that, but they really focused, and when you read through that, you'll kind of see, they really focused more on intake processes more than my mind classification. But I appreciate where they were going and and have come to understand really more and more of what 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 that group was saying. And so with some of the tools, so it goes way beyond risk and needs. The questionnaire goes way, or the the focus group went way beyond risk and needs. We have really changed our medical and mental health process, really in the last thirty, sixty, thirty days, sixty days, sixty days. And what traditionally happened was is that there was a pre-screening and I know this may be too technical, but it's kind of important to get a grasp on what's going on. We had a pre-screening, which was about a ten, a ten questionnaire, when the policeman would come in with the with the detainee, then they'd go through those ten questions. And at that point, our medical staff would decide, yes, this is somebody that's well enough or to come into the jail, that we can actually accept and and deal with whatever medical needs that this person might have. And they would come in and then after that, they'd go to fingerprinting, they'd go to Morpho, they'd go to all the other booking in processes. And then at the very end of that, they would get a full medical screen. So they'd be a much, a nurse and our end would sit down with them and talk to them about their past medical history, their mental health, their medications, their, all of that at the very end. And what was happening was on occasion, we'd get the person booked in, we'd accept them and then somewhere between being accepted and the medical states, something would go sideways. They'd get hostile, they'd get violent, they'd get mad, they'd get something would happen. So we'd have to set, pull them out of the process, put them in another cell, and then we, they were being delayed getting that medical and mental health screening. Somehow they would get lost or fall through the cracks or that would be delayed for six, eight hours or whatever. And that really is a very risky time of the incarceration is that first seventy two, you'll read the research, is seventy two hours, the first seventy two hours are the most critical, most likely for abuse, suicide, suicide attempts, assaults and anger, and they're dealing with all of that. So really, that first seventy two hours, so we didn't want those gaps. So in order to eliminate that gap, we moved all medical screening to the front. So right now, when they come in, the the policeman stays with them while we do full medical assessment, we do their mental health assessments, we do their substance abuse assessments, their medical, their mental health, their medical, their physical, their history, all that is done right up front. So there's very little chance unless they get combative during that process, then they will never be taken out of the line, if you will, for that process. So we have changed that and that is working very well for us. You'll see in the questionnaires, there's some references to the Cleveland County process. So Brandy, our security major, she is from Cleveland County, she developed a lot of those instruments and has worked with implementing those instruments. So we have done that. We started that before Brandy got there, but she's been able to validate that what we're doing is really what Cleveland County has done, really best practices that she had found when she was doing the research on those instruments. So a new thing, the arresting agency does have a questionnaire that they fill out now. We have a much more involved mental health screening tool than what we've had. So that whole process has been revamped and updated, I think is would meet the criteria at least that the that the focus group wanted us to look at and implement. We have done that. But again, that's something that you never get finished with. We'll never get where we want to go and and catch and evaluate the things that we want to evaluate. So we're going to continually look at and modify and improve that process. Maybe I ran over myself. Is there anything on there? Referral to outside agencies, that's another piece that we have changed by moving the the mental health screening and the medical screening from the back, the the office that was being used to do that full medical and mental health that's now vacant. So we have really talked to Diversion Hub and they are going to assign people, staff to work in that office. So now, so now if we do have, if if during that mental health and medical screening, we identify somebody that needs further treatment or has had history or is currently a patient of another agency, we can refer them immediately. They'll go down to the end, we'll get with the staff that from the diversion of, they can make that handoff or at least those notifications that your your patient has been admitted to the jail, this is the situation. So get those treatment providers involved in this thing very early on. It'll also help us make the handoff between the the jail and all the service people that we have, Team, North Care, Diversion, Homeless Alliance, the Veterans Administration, I could go on and on with the agencies. So again, having people inside the inside the intake process to help go through and identify that, what's happened in the past is we'll get somebody and and they'll think, well, they're a good candidate for Team. So Team will send people over to interview and do a questionnaire. And then community sentencing will say, well, I may be able to help them. So they'll send somebody over, bail projects will send somebody over. So we end up pulling that same person off the floor or out of the jail multiple times for these interviews. We're hoping that this that this new set of staff can help really facilitate a lot of that. So as they question, as they go through that assessment thing, say, hey, this is a good person for North Care, this is a person that may be good for the Homeless Alliance or this is a veteran, so maybe the Veterans Administration can get involved in that. So hopefully that will help that transition and especially the urgency of getting that person immediately connected to people that have history with them or can help them. So that's that's all new. So we think that's in line really with what the focus group had in mind. And again, when you look at population reduction, that was the last group that we looked at. When you look at population reduction, it's pretty simple in my mind, it's how many people are coming through the front door, how long do they stay and then when, how how many leave? So really, that's what you look at when you look at population reduction. And again, we look at the number of intakes, we have very little control over who comes to the jail. Again, I meet with Chief Gorley and other law enforcement agencies on a regular basis and talk to them about who's being brought in and what those folks look like. And we study those numbers very regularly and and give feedback to the law enforcement agencies. But really, in in the bottom line is we have very little control over that. Length of stay is basically controlled by O R Bonds or conditional bonds, bail project. And again, getting people out with a bond or getting people through the court system is how you get out of jail. And so again, we work real hard with bail projects and O R Bonds and those kind of things. And especially we work with our 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 partners that we could not exist without Team, Diversion Hub, North Care, and that list could go on. I'm trying to hurry. Department of Corrections is another key part of of getting people out of jail. And again, we work very closely with Department of Corrections to take people as soon as we get them, especially high risk people or people with mental health needs or or medical needs. They are, they have been very good with us to get people out of the jail and into their system quickly. We work with the court system, of course, public defender's office and other attorneys to help help get access to clients. Again, getting people through the court system is a way to reduce population. There you go. Any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Director Williams. I I do have a couple of questions, if 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 I may, just to just to follow up. I don't know quite where this first question fits in, maybe in the risk and needs assessment, and we can also follow up privately if that's if that's better to do. But I'm just curious, is there, and this is maybe beyond the purview of the jail itself, but when a person is on medication, particularly mental health medication, and they're released without any additional medication, it can pose a pretty significant problem. And I'm just curious if there's ever been any talk about the opportunity to release an individual with like a week's worth of medication? Is that something that?
That is not unusual that we do that. In fact, we even have a relationship with pharmacies in the area that we can set up a script or we can set up a place where they can even go get a refill or something. So that is not unusual at all. We used to have a staff, he he has recently found another job, but we had a staff person through turnkey that actually that was what they did was help reintegrate the mentally ill and helping them find treatment prescriptions and drugs once they leave. So we do that on a routine basis.
Okay. Is it, is it, is it a pretty standard part of the release process?
I couldn't tell you. I mean, all that's between the psychiatrist and what he's willing to order and how many they're willing to give that person. And I think there's more to that than what I know. But I'll I'll find out some more and get back with you on that.
Before you, I I just want to.
Please.
Back on what you said, is there a way that you, if if a person has a history and they are already involved with an agency that may have scripts that had reduced or no, is there a way that in your collaboration with them, once you know that they've been, they're involved with someone else, is there a way that you can bring them in if they're not a Team or a North Care? And then make sure that they have the medicine that they need? Is that possible?
Absolutely. That's part of what I was talking about when we get the diversion, you know, the diversion hub has hired those two individuals, there'll be two there all the time, and they will be able to help facilitate that discussion. So once we identify an intake that a person does have a medication or they do have a physician or mental health staff that are working with them, then we will immediately get that information to that staff so they can connect with those providers and let them know the situation and what's going on with them. Absolutely. That is a huge piece of what we're trying to accomplish.
And then, Mr. Director, just just one other question, and I don't know, I want to be appropriate here, so you can tell me if if any of these questions aren't appropriate. But there's been quite a bit of of publicity and public discussion about the health department's, you know, findings, and now there's some assessments of some fees and fines because the health department may have felt like some things have not been addressed in the in the timeframe that they felt like that they would be addressed. The latest that I heard was that the the jail or the county would be issuing a response to kind of challenge that that report. You may have referenced that, but is that still in the works, just generally speaking? You guys are planning to to challenge the?
Yes, we have filed a a motion or whatever it is to have a hearing. And that's the first step is that it's an administrative hearing, an administrative process. So that's where we're at. So we have filed the paperwork to make that, to make that hearing happen.
All right, thank you. Are there additional questions for Director Williams? Steven?
As you, as you talk through, and and the language I use may not be the right descriptive, as you talk through your community partners, be it a North Care, a diversion hub, Team, whatever, are there an adequate number of receiving slots that are available to match every detainee who needs community services with the appropriate community service? Does that, does that make any sense?
And and again, what we find is is that if it's a fairly high functioning person that's got some resources, that doesn't have extensive mental health history or homelessness and has some family, those folks are, there's resources for them. The people that are hardest to service are homeless or transient people that have no outside resources, that have severe mental illness, people with sex crimes, or any combination of those, those placements are difficult, very difficult to find places for them to go. And again, we're challenged with that. Nearly every time we submit a request for an O R Bond, you know, we're asked, where's this person going to go? And it's like, I don't know, he's homeless, he's got no family, he's mentally ill, he's got severe medical issues, he doesn't need to be in jail, but he has no better, no other place to go. So no, there are not sufficient resources for those most challenging cases. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. That that's helpful. I think that can help inform potentially our work forward. There there's a second group I wanted to inquire about, which are detainees who are senior in nature, who are who are nearing end of life care, whatever the case may be. Do we frequently come across seniors who might need unique services upon dismissal?
Absolutely. I should have said dementia was one of the things that are hard to find placements for, especially if you've got dementia or or symptoms like that and other issues. Typically, that, you know, you get healthcare issues with dementia, you get mental health issues with dementia, you get a lot of other things with that and they're and they're very intense patients that take a lot of care and a lot of resources, just a lot of places are not equipped to deal with that level of care. So those are very hard to place. If you're not a veteran, it makes it even ten times worse or harder. Yeah.
Hannah?
In that same vein of pre-trial diversion efforts, are we looking at knocking down those walls or what do we need to do? Do we need to get an architect in there to, because I know that that, it seems like that free space, just what I know about what's coming in with the diversion officers that will be located within the that book in, book in area right there. I know there's space, but there's not really a whole lot of space. So could those walls, knocking down those walls, help us in that in that effort?
Yeah, we, you know, we have partnered with C JAC and they have an architect that they that they have hired early on and when they were looking at the new jail and some of that sort of thing. And they have agreed to expand that. I hate to talk out of turn because I don't know if that's all gone through their board and been approved, but I did meet with a subcommittee probably two weeks ago and it was approved that they would extend that contract or or expand that contract a little bit for that person to come in and look at what walls could be taken down and maybe what low cost, low impact kind of things could be done with that. And again, when you look at remodeling an intake, that intake area is pretty busy now and to remodel it, we'd have to shut it down, move some things. So really looking at the logistics of that. So we have started that and C JAC has agreed, at least in part, a subcommittee that I met with has agreed to expand that contract for that engineer and architect to come in and look at that. So that is still going, yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me the current number, like the current number of pods that actually have folks in them? I know briefly when you were talking about the direct supervision recommendations, you didn't know how they came up with those staffing numbers. I think their recommendation was one officer per pod per shift. And so it feels like that is appropriate while the workload is is increased Monday through Friday. I know they're not getting any time out of their pods on the weekends and sometimes not even during the week as well because of that workload. So hopefully we could prioritize that. I just didn't know how many pods actually had, you know, were full in inside the detention.
Yeah, I didn't bring that, but I did the calculation in that response. Did you see that? Takes about five point one or five point three staff to cover a pod, oh, oh, twenty four hours, seven days a week, considering the holidays and training. And my whole formula is in that response, but it takes right at five people to. And my whole formula is in that response, but it takes right at five people to cover one pod. There's 28 pods. So, five times 28 is basically how many officers it would take to do that. Chris, can you do that math real quick? What? 140. There you go. Take about 140 officers to put one person in the pod 24/7. Yeah.
Director Williams, thank you for this report. I, I think it's been very, very helpful and, uh, very, very valuable. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a motion to receive, uh, the report? There's a motion, there is a second.
Could we get a verbal motion and second, please?
Aye.
So, move.
We'll call the roll.
June Elkins Baker?
Aye.
Reverend Ray Douglas?
Yes.
Hannah Royce?
Yes.
Reverend Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Leslie Nessmith?
Yes.
Ryan Haney?
Yes.
Aaron Engelke?
Yes.
Chris Steele?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I have that it's 9:49 and we've got, uh, three, four agenda items to get through here as quickly as we can. Agenda item number four is discussion of possible action regarding appointment of additional members to the CAB subcommittees. Um, members, I put this on just to make sure that we're all clear. Uh, we had, uh, previously left the decision whether or not to add additional members to the subcommittees, to the subcommittees themselves. As we are continuing to do our work and there's awareness of the work that we're doing, uh, people are contacting me to say, hey, we would like to serve on various subcommittees. And I just want to ask in a public, uh, setting, what the preference is it? Is it okay to just pass those names along to each individual subcommittee? Or to the chairs of the individual subcommittee for consideration of that? Would that be the easiest way to go about this? Aaron?
I think so. Yep.
Okay, then that's what we'll do. We'll just, uh, we'll just pass those names as, as they come in. Or if any of us are aware of any names, if you would, just make sure that we're passing those names along to the chairs of the various subcommittees for consideration. That's how that will be handled. Uh, agenda item number five, do we need to? Okay, so is there a motion, um, to accept that process as the process that we will follow in referring, uh, individuals who are interested to serve on these subcommittees?
Yes, I motion that our, uh, subcommittee recommendations for additional, um, subcommittee members be emailed from CAB members to the chairs of those respective subcommittees.
I'll second that.
So, second, is there discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
June Elkins Baker?
Aye.
Reverend Ray Douglas?
Yes.
Hannah Royce?
Yes.
Reverend Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Leslie Nessmith?
Yes.
Ryan Haney?
Yes.
Aaron Engelke?
Yes.
Chris Steele?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Agenda item number five is discussion of possible action regarding the times and dates of the convening of the next subcommittees. I think that we've had some confusion around this. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we're all, uh, aware of when the next convenings of each of our subcommittees will be. And, um, and that we can state that in a public setting. So, I'm looking for direction from either our attorney or our staff.
All right, our next community relationship subcommittee is going to be July 27th, 2022.
At 10:45?
At 10:45 AM, sorry. Our next operations subcommittee is going to meet on 8/17/2022 at 2:30 PM. Our policy and procedures subcommittee will meet 8/17/2022 at 2:15 PM. And the recruitment and retention is not set to meet at this time.
Okay, uh, Michaela, can I just ask the operations? So, I had that you said they were going to meet at 2:30 and then the policy was going to meet at 2:15 on the same day?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. The reason we did that is because what happened was there was a, a, a longer gap than necessary. So, the three of us on the ops subcommittee were, we had to wait an hour to start. So, if we start later than, than 2:30, they told us that would be fine, but that we could go ahead and schedule it early so that we can start immediately after the policy and procedures subcommittee ends.
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's considerable overlap on those two committees and we truly did find ourselves waiting for an extended period of time to reconvene to meet open meeting standards.
Yeah, as I recall, all three of us on the, on the, uh, operations subcommittee are also on the policy and procedures subcommittee.
Okay. Do we know who the? Maybe, maybe the re- re- retention and, or the recruitment and the retention has not formally met yet for lack of quorum. So, there is no chair. So, we'll reach out to the members of, of that particular subcommittee and, and get some things scheduled.
Yeah, we had previously determined 9:00 AM on the same day as the community relationships subcommittee.
Which would be July the 27th?
Correct.
Is it, is it possible to set that date right now? Okay, so, uh, for agenda item number five, I would, um, ask for the committee to consider accepting the dates of the next committee meetings as being the community relationships, July 27th at 10:45 AM. Operations on August 17th at 2:30 PM. Policies and procedures on August the 17th at 2:15 PM. And re- recruitment and retention of staff on July the 27th at 9:00 AM.
A motion?
Of a motion?
By second.
And a second, is there discussion? Debate, seeing none, we'll call the roll.
June Elkins Baker?
Aye.
Reverend Ray Douglas?
Yes.
Hannah Royce?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Leslie Nessmith?
Yes.
Ryan Haney?
Yes.
Aaron Engelke?
Yes.
Chris Steele?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Agenda item number six, this brings us back to, um, an agenda item that we had previously discussed a couple of meetings ago. And it's back in front of us and it is discussion of possible action for the citizens advisory board to recommend an appointment to the jail trust to replace Director Alba. And this recommendation, recommendation will be to the Oklahoma County Commissioners for their consideration. Want to be very clear, as we have this discussion, this is a recommendation, they, the county commissioners are free to accept or not accept the recommendation, but they had voted in a previous meeting to ask this body to make a recommendation to fill, uh, the vacancy, um, made possible through, uh, Director Alba's departure. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion for a recommendation or recommendations to be considered from the citizens advisory board, um, to the county commissioners.
What, what's the, the, what's the motion?
So, the motion is for us to make a recommendation to the jail trust to, to fill the vacancy made possible by Director Alba. Director Alba resigned, and so there is a vacancy on the jail trust. But it is the county commissioners who actually appoint that, uh, position. And so, the recommendation from the citizens advisory board to the jail trust would be made to the Oklahoma County Commissioners for their consideration. Sorry that that's super, duper confusing.
And, and I think we've talked about this before, but could, could it be recommendations?
I suppose it could be a recommendation if a majority of the, this body voted for that. So, we would, if the majority of this body said we want more than one recommendation, it could, could be that.
Yeah, I would like to move for recommendations, if, if that makes sense. Just so we can send them, who, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if we need to vote on every single one, or if we just need to vote to, you know, whoever has an idea, and we could just send them a list. Maybe this is more appropriate for a discussion.
Yeah. So, the, 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 maybe we should go back and consider, I think it was a recommendation. I think the motion from the county commissioners were for a recommendation because it's, it's for, but we would need to go back and see what that actual, what, what the county commissioners had asked for. They voted, the county commissioners voted in a public meeting to ask for a recommendation, and I believe it was a recommendation. I don't know if we have the authority to expand beyond. I'm looking for some direction. Lynn, I, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yes. These are the right recommendations, and I don't think they're appropriate. Those instructions, those, we're not saying that they're appropriate. You'll have to decide that upon yourself. You don't know if you can make two recommendations. But I don't know that you need to make a motion and you're going to do it on your own.
So, can we just table this agenda item until we are clear?
Yeah, if that's the little.
I think it's fine to table it, but I think we had the same discussion at our last meeting, right? Wh- what were our recommendations?
We didn't discuss it at the last meeting. It wasn't on the agenda.
Well, the meeting prior to that?
Yeah.
Cause I remember asking you how much time you needed to find recommendations.
Yeah, it'd only been put on the agenda a couple of days prior. I, I'm, I'm ready to put someone forward today and we can vote on whoever, you know, I put forward and whoever anyone else puts forward. But I think, uh, at the last meeting afterwards, and this was not on the record, but I, I spoke with, uh, uh, the chairman and asked, well, can we put multiple people forward? And they can just take our recommendations and they can either choose one or not choose one or, or whatever. And I, I think that was sort of the understanding that we could do that, but now it sounds like maybe that's not the case. But I'm happy to do whatever the chair feels is appropriate. And I'm, I mean, I've got somebody in mind that I'm happy to put forward today.
Mr. Chairperson, uh, I think at the, not the last meeting, the previous meeting, um, the, there was a recommendation for Pastor Scobie. And then there was also a recommendation, uh, that it was not a person, but a physician. And so, I think I had, uh, uh, Mr. Chairperson had recommended Pastor Scobie. And I had recommended that we would put either the chairperson or the vice chairperson of this committee, uh, is the recommendation. So, it wouldn't be a person, but a physician. And so, if that position changes, that would be our representation. I think that's what, uh, we left with at the last time. But, uh, if, uh, and so whatever we decide to accept, if we gonna, if we're going to, uh, submit names and our position, that I'm also ready to, to vote. I don't, I don't know if it's, it's that complicated.
It, it is, um, I'm, I'm happy for us to vote as well. I'm, I'm happy for us to, um, put forward names and, and take a vote today if, or positions, however we would want to do that, Pastor Douglas. But to, to be fair to Ryan, uh, he, he did talk to me about, is it possible to put forth more than one recommendation? I did not know the answer to that. I'm open to that. I think that we could, we would probably need to get clarification from the, the county commissioners. And so, to be fair to, to Ryan, in the question of can we put forth multiple recommendations? Maybe it would be appropriate to table this today, get clarification, communicate that immediately to our citizens advisory board and put this on the agenda for our next meeting. Or we could vote today, whatever is the will of the committee.
I'm definitely, I'm definitely interested in hearing any, all recommendations because some of the people who are recommended, even if they are not chosen for this, they may be great for a subcommittee. So, I personally want to hear all recommendations.
Sure. And, and as someone who may not be here next month, I mean, I'm happy to, to move for, well, I'll just say, um, and I don't, and I don't know if I need to move for this after I mention it, but my thought was, uh, it would be great to put Adam Luck on this, on, on the jail trust. Uh, he, you know, he's the CEO of City Care, so he works with homeless vulnerable populations. He was a, a well thought of member of the pardon and parole board. You know, he, he was the executive director for Right on Crime. I, I would be happy to move, uh, to put Adam on, on the jail trust. So, if, 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 if that's what we want to do, that's fine. Uh, otherwise, maybe I just need to, if I'm not able to be here next month, maybe I need to have somebody else make that motion and maybe I can give my proxy.
Would we like to vote today?
I also have actually two names that I wanted to put forward as well.
Okay, let's, um, we're, we're looking, I know we've, we've got to wrap this up pretty quickly. Uh, because we've had this discussion before, let's, let's put forth names we can vote, um, if we want to. And, um, we'll put forth a recommendation. Um, and if, if, um, this is public records, so if they want to know who all was considered, they can also have access to, to know that who all was considered. So, Ryan, I hear you putting forth Adam Luck?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I second it.
Leslie, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I have two. Um, one is actually someone who's a pillar of the community. Um, she served in, she actually, I shouldn't say served, she spent seven years incarcerated. Um, she is, uh, a, someone who has turned her life around, uh, for the last 20 years. She is on the construction industries board. She is one of only two female, um, plumbing contractors in the state. She recently passed the plumbing inspection, uh, uh, process, and she is now a plumbing inspector as well. Her name is Stacy Coe. She is also on the board for, um, the Kelly Club, which is a, uh, for, um, AA. Uh, so she is a pillar of the community. I can personally attest to, um, her. I know her through business. The second person I'd like to put forward is Marquise Miller. He's a local, uh, businessman and entrepreneur. He's the pastor of Reach Out Ministries. And he is also, uh, the, uh, CEO of, it's the wonderfully made homeless home. So, both of those, um, definitely are people who'd be great for that or for one of the subcommittees.
Okay, thank you. Are there other recommendations?
I don't have a specific recommendation, but I, I'm in favor of the person that we recommend to be a member of this board.
I would like to recommend Pastor Scobie to fill this position. Just to, um, reiterate some points that I had made earlier, I think diversity is very, very important as we consider, uh, the composition of the jail trust. And I think that, um, ultimately, we want everyone in the community to be, um, feel included and to feel like that they're a part and to see themselves in the composition of the jail trust. And so, I would like to recommend Pastor Scobie. Okay, so we have four recommendations. Adam Luck, Stacy Coe, Marquise Miller, and Pastor Scobie. I think that we would, how should we do this at this point?
Yeah, I, I don't know if we can. Is this a big for beating?
What did I, what did I do here? Pastor Douglas, what did I do?
I'm just saying this is that, so, I mean, if, so we're having an election, but we have a runoff. So, I mean, who gets, who will we recommend a person with the, with the, the most votes?
I, I think that's how we would do it. I I think that's how we would do it.
I'm not withdrawing that, uh, I still believe that 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 we we should. And so I guess that would be uh my recommendation, either the chair or the vice chair of this maybe, so I guess we have six.
Okay. Let's let's take these one at a time.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, since we are running late with lawyers and this is a posted meeting for the Board of County Commissioners at this site. Is it possible, we're going to go straight into executive session, would you entertain just recessing for just one minute? And uh allow us to convene and then we'll go into that room and be out of your way and you could reconvene?
For sure.
Okay, I apologize for the interruption.
Is there, is there a motion to recess?
I motion.
I second.
Motion to recess, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Leslie.
Thank you. All right, June Elkins Baker.
Aye.
Reverend Ray Douglas.
Yes.
Hannah Royce.
Yes.
Reverend Derek Scobie.
Yes.
Stephen Buck.
Yes.
Leslie Nessmith.
Yes.
Ryan Haney.
Yes.
Aaron Engelke. And Chris Steele.
Yes.
We are in recess.